Good morning. It is Wednesday, April 2nd, 2014, and we're in the Board of Commissioners' room, 1115 Commercial Street Northeast for our weekly Board of Commissioners meeting. We start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you'll join us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Well, it's a special day in Marion County, lots of things going on. One thing that makes it special is having somebody, people, at our board meeting. I was going to say, we have a State of the County presentation and state at noon, and then the day we've been waiting for to rededicate Courthouse Square at 2:00 this afternoon. So, a busy and special day. But Earth Day is a special day. Alan, I see you hiding in the background. We first start with a presentation on the Earth Day Awards. Alan Pennington?
Well, good morning. It is indeed a special day, and it is exciting to see so many family members and friends here support their children on this special day. And so, this is kind of an interesting day because there is the rededication day, and that's important because if we could have moved Earth Day back just another month, we could have been down there doing this today. But I do want to mention that this special, that this upcoming Earth Day event, which is going to be on April 19th, which is a Saturday, is our 15th annual event that's been going on, it's been supported by Marion County for all these years. Starting, if those of you who went to the Oregon Garden 15 years ago probably remember what it looked like, the first Earth Day event, we might have had 300 people show up. It was kind of hard to convince people to come out and look at those sticks that have been stuck into the bare earth. But if you have not been out there in a long time, it is a beautiful sight. So, we hope everybody can come. We generally have about 2,500 to 3,000 people show up. One year, we had over 5,000. So, it's quite something. There'll be a lot of activities for young and old alike. There's going to be the Turtle Ridge Wildlife will be having their birds, there will be trees to plant, there's all sorts of activities, from planting trees to potting seeds to, you name it. And there's going to be music. The Woodburn High School Mariachi Band will be playing there, Bush Elementary Marimba Band, and there's the Imada Drum Band from the Early College High School here in Salem. So, we hope everybody can come. It's the only day of the year that is free for all the folks in Marion County to show up, and we might even let folks from Polk County come too, I think, but I'm not sure about that. But anyway, get on with the presentations. This is an unusual year too, because we've been doing this art calendar to use as in our promotional materials every year, and it's a kind of way to get kids involved and families involved and find an alternative way to come up with graphics. And every year, it's been always a high school student, usually a junior or senior, who had that artwork, that had that kind of skill to make a poster that we would like. And honestly, if you look at those posters over there, you'll see that all three of them really could have been featured on our poster easily. The artwork would have lent itself perfectly, because all of the kids did a great job with that. We had over 100 entries to choose from, so it wasn't easy. But we decided to take a risk this year and, for the first time ever, feature a kindergartner's work. Our winner over here, the grand winner, is Adeline Satia? Sorry. Satia from Valley Inquiry Charter School, who is, how old are you, Adeline? Six? Six years old. So, this is a new one, so we'll get you to come up in just a minute. And then, we also have a, the middle school, the 4th through 7th grade contest area was chosen by a girl named Ozine Seifert, who is from Wright Elementary, who I understood was going to be coming today, but they somehow did not make it, which is unfortunate. I hear she's a great kid. And then, we also have Grace Hennich?
Hennick.
Hennick, sorry about that. Grace Hennick is a 12th grader at Sprague High School here in Salem, and I just found out that she's going to go off and study at the University of Oregon to get into some creative writing, the writing program. So, we wish her well on that. So, if the Commissioners would be so kind as to come down, and the paparazzi are going to be let loose on you in just a second. They're going to be snapping some photos. And they will call you up?
Just go from top to bottom, they'll be fine.
All right. Since I already know these names are hard, and I didn't listen closely, I'll let the other Commissioners introduce each one.
So, how is the name pronounced again, Hennick?
We'll see if he did. I think so.
Hennick, is that right?
Hennick.
Hennick, okay. Grace Hennick, 8 through 12 winners. So, this is 2014 Earth Day Contest winner. For your outstanding efforts to support our programs in Marion County, your contribution is recognized by the Marion County Department of Public Works Environmental Services, the Oregon Garden, and the Marion County Board of Commissioners. Thank you for helping promote recycling, waste reduction, and environmental protection on this year's Earth Day.
Alan, could they hold their paintings too?
Oh, absolutely.
And Grace, Grace just stay here and we'll...
You don't get to go sit down.
Yeah. It's never easy here. All right. Is that the one that isn't here?
No, this is Adeline.
Okay. I think they're not there.
Excuse me.
Oopsie. Adeline, and you say your last name?
Satia.
Satia. So, you want to turn around so they can see you on the camera here. So, Adeline, this also, you are a grand prize winner in the 2014 Earth Day Contest for your outstanding efforts to support our programs in Marion County. Your contribution is recognized by the Marion County Department of Public Works Environmental Services, the Oregon Garden, and the Marion County Board of Commissioners. So, thank you for helping to promote recycling, waste reduction, and environmental protection on this year's Earth Day. And there's also a gift certificate for you and your certificate here.
Let me hold a good one for you. This is what Adeline did. Did you get to look at this? We'll take a few pictures, and I'd want to congratulate both of you, all three, and very nice work. All right, no more fun stuff, down to work. My next item's a public comment. Nobody has signed up to speak this morning, so we'll move to our consent calendar. I think Commissioner Carlson's anxious to do this.
So, Mr. Chair, I would move today's consent calendar. Under Business Services, approve Amendment Number 2 to add $7,614 to the leased warehouse space at 1505 Front Street with Eleanor Bachmann, and extend the term through August 31st, 2014. Under Tax Collector, approve an order authorizing a property tax refund in the amount of $101,184.30 to U.S. Leesco, Inc. Approve an order authorizing a property tax refund in the amount of $36,257.80 to PIH Salem LLC, and approve an order authorizing the cancellation of uncollectible personal property tax accounts.
I'll second the motion.
All right, move and second it to approve the consent calendar, as just read. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. Start our action items. First is under Business Services, consider recommendations from the 2014 County Compensation Board regarding compensation of elected officials. 2014 Compensation Board Chair Tracy Warren and Mina Hansen, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. We are here today, as many are aware, the state law requires that we impanel a board of volunteers to review the compensation of county-elected officials. And this year, the board met about a month ago, and Tracy was chosen to be the chair. This is her second year on the compensation board. We have quite a robust group of professionals who have experience in compensation, and they have some recommendations that they put together this year to have the board review and consider moving forward to the Budget Committee. So, I'll let Tracy talk about their recommendations.
So, the Compensation Board is recommending there be a 5.45 increase for the county clerk, a 2.77% increase for the Commissioners, a 5% increase for the county sheriff, and no change to any of the other elected official positions. We are also recommending a cost-of-living adjustment for elected officials if one is given to non-represented employees.
And the Compensation Board reviewed the market information prepared for them by Human Resources. And Human Resources has long had a practice of attempting to move employee salaries to plus or minus 5% of market. During the recession, we kind of stretched that a little bit because of budgetary considerations, but we're attempting to move everyone back into that alignment of plus or minus 5% from market. So, the Compensation Board likewise adopted that philosophy and looked at those market analysis, and the recommendations they're making, bring most all of those positions with a couple of exceptions into that plus or minus 5%. The one other recommendation that Tracy didn't touch on was the recommendation that when the justice courts combine, currently, the justice courts are two part-time positions, that that salary for the justice that remains will now be full-time, be increased to cover that full-time position. So, it's currently half of a salary, it would be increased to become a full-time amount.
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
So, thank you for the information, and we do this every year, and we generally make the motion just to pass it on to the Budget Committee rather than approving it here, but this is our first chance to see it. So, I guess the question that I had when I read this, and then I heard the same discussion just now, is that we want to be plus or minus 5% of market, but some of them that were recommended for an increase were right at five, below 5%. So, or am I misreading that?
The information you have in the attach sheets shows the reflected amount now with the increases built in.
Oh, okay. So, we don't have the papers that show what it is without the increases? Where would that be?
That's correct. That was not included in the packet that you received.
So, we can get that information, right?
You can get that information. I will have that forwarded to you.
Right. I think that was a confusion last year too, that we didn't get that. So, we want to see both the before and the after, so that we have a chance to see.
We'll make sure you get the before then. Yes, the information you have in front of you is the after, the application of the 5%. So, if you will look, for example, at the assessor, without the 5% increase, that position was at a negative 8.76. Am I reading that right, Tracy? Oh, my glasses on. Oh, no, that was one we did not recommend change to, right?
That is the one, yes, correct. And that's because it was at a negative 3.76. So, it was already within that 5% amount, so that's why we did not recommend an increase there. For the assessor.
For the assessor, I'm sorry. I was...
Right. And so, in your package, you'll see that some of the sheets have, is it the blue highlight? Yes, the blue highlighted, the sheets with the blue highlighting on them are the ones where there was a change. So, if you look at the Commissioners, they were 7.266 out of market, so the 2...
0.77.
2.77 was what would bring it to 5%.
Okay. All right. So, you'll provide us with all of those additional ones, so we can review those before the Budget Committee meeting? That'd be great.
And then, there are lots of documents here, and thank you for that. On the cover sheet here, the memo on the back, it shows the different positions, total pay relative to market, it includes base allowance retirement contributions. Being in parentheses indicates that we are under market there. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And this is before adjustments?
This is after adjustments.
This is after adjustments.
Okay, that's what I wanted to...
All right. That's the confusion.
This is after, and so, okay.
This would be after the adjustments.
So, we're still below market even making adjustments?
Correct, but the county's practice is plus or minus 5%, so...
And... Mr. Chair, I think the concern is that the Budget Committee can adopt or choose to adopt or not adopt the Compensation Board's recommendations. So, it's important for us to be able to see the data as is to determine whether or not we want to do that.
We will make sure that you have both for the Budget Committee.
All right, thanks.
So, if there aren't any other questions, I'd make a motion, and following our tradition of moving this to the Budget Committee, I will make a motion that we refer the County Compensation Board's recommendations to the Marion County Budget Committee for further review and consideration. That information that Commissioner Carlson is talking about will be included.
I'll second the motion.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve or pass this on to the County Budget Board, having to do with the Compensation Board's findings for final approval. Does that sum it up? I don't...
No, we're just moving it without recommendation.
Two for them...
For review and consideration.
They may, I'm trying to say that. Okay. You had it right, Commissioner, I'm sorry. Let's say you're all clear on this, and I am, in spite of my inability to repeat it. Any further discussion? All right, hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you all. Well, I said the fun stuff was over, but I was wrong. Our next is to approve a proclamation designating April 6th to the 13th, 2014, as Volunteer Week in Marion County. And Kathy Crocker's here. Kathy, I know you're always busy and you do great things, why don't you tell us about it?
Thank you. Let me see if I can get this working. He said just to press B. That's not happening. Oh, there you go.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Kathy Crocker. I have the privilege of being the Volunteer Services Coordinator for Marion County, and I am here today to ask that we proclaim April 6th through the 13th of 2014 as Volunteer Week in Marion County. It does coincide with the National Volunteer Week, which was established in 1974, and it really is, it focuses national attention on the impact that volunteers have in our communities, the power and service that people give in their civic leadership. The week draws support from President, Congress, mayors, governors, municipal leaders all across the country, so I'm hoping that Marion County as well will acknowledge this. And so, I'm asking that you consider this National Volunteer Week starting this Sunday, April 6th. As you'll see, I get to bring, next week, I get to bring my full report for 2013, and I'm so excited because we've got volunteers that you'll get to meet, some stories that we can share for you, folks that have received nominations and will be getting awards next week. So, I'm really excited about next week's presentation. We had thousands of people volunteer throughout the year, giving thousands of hours of their time and talent, and truly has helped impact what Marion County can accomplish in all of the departments of the county. So, I'm really excited about that. So, I'm thankful for our volunteers, and I do have a proclamation in front of you. I don't know how you would like to, I can scroll, I have a PowerPoint that will follow along with you, however you choose to read this.
Go ahead. Oh, for reading it? Excuse me.
We'll generally read that when we pass it, right?
All right. Is there a motion to approve the proclamation?
So, I would, Mr. Chair, I would move that we approve this proclamation designating April 6th through 13th, 2014, as Volunteer Week in Marion County.
I'll second the motion.
All right, it's moved and seconded to approve proclamation designating April 6th to 13th, 2014, as Volunteer Week in Marion County. Further discussion? I don't hear any, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. And now, we'll read that proclamation. Commissioner Millen, would you begin?
Sure. In the matter of proclaiming April 6th through 13th, 2014, to be National Volunteer Week in Marion County, this matter came before the Marion County Board of Commissioners at its regularly scheduled public meeting on April 2nd, 2014. Whereas the entire community can inspire, equip, and mobilize people to take action that changes the world, and whereas volunteers can connect with local community service opportunities through hundreds of community service organizations, and...
Whereas individuals and communities are at the center of social change, discovering their power to make a difference, and whereas during this week, all over the nation, service projects will be performed and volunteers recognized for their commitment to service, and whereas the giving of oneself in service to another empowers the giver and the recipient, and...
Whereas experience teaches us that government by itself cannot solve all of our nation's social problems, and whereas our country's volunteer force of over 63 million is a great treasure, and whereas volunteers are vital to our future as a caring and productive nation, and now therefore, we, the Marion County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim April 6th to 13th, 2014, as National Volunteer Week in Marion County, and urge our fellow citizens to volunteer in their respective communities. Very good. So, we'll look forward to next week, and we'll meet these people, and you'll tell us some of the great things they've been doing for Marion County.
Thank you.
All right, thanks for coming, Kathy.
All right, have a great day.
Now, we have a couple items under the clerk, having to do with elections. The first is consider approval of a contract for $290,000 with Core Communications for the printing of ballots through June 30th, 2016. Bill, would you?
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. This is the first time, I think, we're getting formal contracts for some of the services we've used in the past, and the legal has told us that we really need to do this for the protection of the county. This contract is a multi-year contract. I want to say that our new ballots, because of our new voting system, are sometimes cost just about half as much as the ballots we used to print. Ballots used to cost between 40 and 80 cents. Now, our ballots cost between about 25 and 35 cents each to print. Well, I was just on the phone before we got here with Core Communications to try to be sure that we got our ballots for the military and overseas. We plan on mailing those out Friday, and they assured us that they'll be hitting our dock tomorrow at 9:30 in the morning. We have had a very good relationship with this particular group over time, in that they've been receptive. When we've needed to make last-minute changes, they've been able to do that for us. But we're asking for your approval to go ahead with this contract with Core Communications to provide ballots. Generally, a large election, we have, we print about 175,000 ballots, maybe a little bit less. It really depends each time on what the voter registration is.
Bill, I've got one. This is for a period of time, of course, through 2016. So, what about any special elections or anything that come up during this time? How do you handle them? Are they outside of this contract, or are they anticipate so many, or how does that work?
We think that that's covered through here, but if not, we would have to ask for an increase, for an amendment to the contract. But we're fairly confident that we won't have to do that. We looked at the years that we, every year, we have a May election county-wide, so we count that number of ballots. Every other year, we have a November election county-wide, so we put that in, and then we put in just a couple, a few smaller elections besides to project forward. So, we hope to not have to come back to you.
Well, it's good to acknowledge that that could happen, and just so we all know, but most likely, it won't, or you're not anticipating. Any other questions?
I have a couple of questions. So, really glad you're bringing this contract forward. How long have we been working with this organization? You said we've been working with them without contracts?
We've been working with predecessors like Capital Press since we used to use wax and other types of methods to print ballots, to set up ballots. And Core is the successor of Capital Press, they're in Corvallis, and I think they've gone through a couple of name changes. And they're one of the few prints, printing facilities that are certified to print ballots. They have to be certified both by the manufacturer and okayed, I believe okayed by the Secretary of State. I'm not sure about that portion. I know the Secretary of State wants an approved ballot printer. They also have to have a security agreement with us that's approved by the Secretary of State in order to print ballots for us.
So, we've been getting ballots from this company or its successor for 20 years, 30 years, 10 years, 5 years?
Gosh, probably when it was Capital Press's print since about 1993, when we started using our past system.
All right. And then, it says it's sole source, and so you've kind of alluded to that. So, the Secretary of State has to approve the company that provides it, or...
They have to approve the security agreement. I don't, I'm not certain whether they actually have to approve the company. Now, the vendor, the ballot vendor themselves, we can only print ballots that are from printers that are approved by Hart Inner Civic, since we're using the Hart Inner Civic system.
So, is that why it's sole source, is because Hart only approved this particular company?
Yes, and there are only a few outfits that print this, and we've looked at some of the others. Some of the others are in Washington State. I think there's only one other in Oregon State over in Bend that says they can print these ballots and has the okay to print them. Now, for us, like today, I'm sending a staff person down to their office in Corvallis while they print. So, there is a convenience factor for us in being able to work with them. Instead of sending data over FTP sites, sometimes we'll send, take a hard drive down there physically, bring a hard drive back. So, we have extra added security in that, in that every time you send anything over the wire, there's always a chance of something dropping off. And so, there are some advantages of having somebody close.
So, then, is there the intent before 2016 to go out for bid then, for the, to see if there's any other vendors out there?
No, we would certainly look at that, but we're not required with ballots to do that.
You're not required to go out to bid for ballots?
No, that's a very, and it's one of those situations where, as long as people are in the, have reasonable prices within the ballpark, the best relationship you have with the person so that they can, at a dime, do things... things for you will happen. In fact, these folks will be working through the night, tonight, to get our ballots for us tomorrow.
Yeah, I understand. It's a very technically complex type of thing, to get all the right names, and you have just hundreds of different ballots and forms, because different people run in different precincts and, and districts and so on. So, certainly, don't want to get in the way of that, just wanting, just kind of trying to understand how this fit within our contracting rules, given that this is, you were mentioning that this is the first time we've had a contract, so.
Any other questions?
No, I don't. I should hear if things are covered.
So, Mr. Chair, I would move that we approve the contract for $290,000 with Core Communications for the printing of ballots through June 30th, 2016.
I'll second the motion.
All right. It's been moved and seconded, proven the contract, $290,000 with Core Communications for ballot printing. Further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, and then we move to a related one. Once you've got the ballots printed, you want to put them in an envelope. So, the next item is consider approval of contract for $175,000 with Senveo for the printing of ballot envelopes through June 30th, 2016. Again, Bill?
Thank you, Commissioners. Senveo is a vendor that does envelopes for most all of the counties in Oregon, and this is the first time we've had a contract with Senveo. In fact, talking with them, I think they think it's the first time that they have a contract with any county clerks or elections office in the state. And here again, we looked at about 175,000 pieces of each type of envelope. There are three envelopes. There's the outer delivery envelope, there's the security envelope, and then there's the return envelope. And so, the prices are based on different volumes. As you can see there, there's a lower price if we get maybe three elections' worth of envelopes. And occasionally, we'll get two or three elections' worth of envelopes, but we don't generally do that, because sometimes we have to make changes to the envelope, and we don't want to have more than we need. But, the, the dollar amount we have there, we project will get us through the major elections throughout the term of the contract, plus some of the minor elections, too. And so, we don't think we'll be having to come back to you, but I always have to reserve that. With elections, you just never know what's going to happen. If the state has a special statewide election at a special date that we had not anticipated, then, of course, that would throw this off. But as far as minor elections, like City Detroit, or Gates, or Idana, having a recall election, or having a bond measure, we'd be fine with that. We're covered.
Well, I hate to catch you off the top of your head, but how many ballots go out on a normal election?
About 150,000. It varies. The number goes up and down. Actually, it's a little bit over 150,000 right now, I believe. We will be sending out about 1,200 ballots Friday for the military and overseas, and then we'll be doing the rest of those ballots. Actually, 30 days out, we'll do an out-of-state run for about 600 or 700 ballots, and then the bulk of the ballots will go out about 20 days before the election. But, we vary between 100, the high 140,000s and the mid 150,000s as far as number of voters. We always have to make more ballots and have more envelopes, because sometimes people need replacement ones, like the last presidential election, we had over 600 people that we issued ballots to in our office needing replacement ballots. In fact, we issued one every minute and 18 seconds. And in this particular election, we have 402 ballot styles. You have to be sure, number one, that they qualify, and that we can account for where that other ballot went or didn't go, kill that other ballot that they had, and then produce a new ballot for them to vote.
It's a little offside, but not. I've been to the election, on the day of election, when you're opening ballots, but I never have seen how it's a bigger job, just coming into my focus of even, you're putting two envelopes and a ballot, and then getting it all coordinated to be mailed out. That's a, that's probably even a bigger job than just opening and counting.
Boy, it is a, it is quite a job. We've got really dedicated staff and crew. Cheryl Hoxspear, our person that leads that, a former Master Sergeant, does a very good job. We bring in about 30 election board workers to do that, and they'll work on that over about a six-to-eight day period, again, about a month or so before the election.
All right. Questions, comments, a motion?
Mr. Chair, do you pronounce it Senveo? Is that what you said?
Yes, Senveo. I know it does look differently, but that's how they pronounce it.
I just wanted to make sure I said it right. All right. So, Mr. Chair, we'd move that we approve the contract for $175,000 with Senveo for the printing of ballot envelopes through June 30th, 2016.
I'll second the motion.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to approve a contract, $175,000 for printing ballot envelopes through June 30th, 2016. Any further discussion? All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thanks, Bill. Have fun putting those together.
Thank you.
Well, that is our last action item. There's no public hearing scheduled for today, so the thing left to do is to read the places we'll be together in the coming week. And where do we start? Some I've mentioned. Wednesday, today, 2 o'clock, Marion County State of the County Presentation to the State and Sublimity Rotary, and that'll be at the Saniam Golf Club, 8724 Golf Club Road in Sublimity. 2 o'clock, a big one as far as I'm concerned, Courthouse Square Rededication Ceremony. It's scheduled for 2 to 5. It'll be at Courthouse Square, 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem. And then this evening, 6 o'clock to 8, Sedcor presents an evening with Forbes Publisher, Rich Carlgaard, and that'll be at the Salem Convention Center, 200 Commercial Street Northeast in Salem. Then we skip to Tuesday, the 8th, 7:30 to 8:30, State and Marion County Meeting at the Covered Bridge Cafe, 510 North Third and State. And then next Wednesday, our normal board session, and for a little while yet, here in the Commissioners Board Room, Assistant Clerk's Office, 1115 Commercial Street Northeast in Salem. And also following that, on the 9th, next Wednesday, 3:30 to 5, Economic Development Advisory Board, Chameca Center for Business and Industry, 626 High Street, 3rd floor. One page, hardly doing anything. But, anybody have any comments or anything?
There are massive numbers of carts in our office.
Yes.
Because...
I said this was the invasion of the big yellow bins. My goodness.
Right. So, because we are rededicating Courthouse Square this afternoon, and then moving back in stages with the different departments, moving in at different times, our move date is Monday, and that means everyone's packing things up, which explains why the list of meetings may be a little smaller, because there's not a lot of space to walk, let alone to sit down and have a meeting right now.
I should have listed the 7th. Is that Tuesday? I don't even know that. But 7th is actual move-in day. That's Monday, I guess.
Monday.
And that's why there's no meeting scheduled. We figured there'd be plenty busy enough. I have a little personal problem. On Tuesday, I leave to do some work in Washington DC, and I've literally packed my itinerary and schedule, and I'm having to recreate it, or go through, go through four crates. A quick survey didn't make it easy, so I'm opting to have them recreated.
Well, so John Latimer sent out an email yesterday saying absolutely no personal items in the bins, and I had stayed till 10 o'clock Monday to pack, and I had taken some four cans of Campbell's Soup, you know, the super one? And put it in a shopping bag and stuffed it down in a corner. So, I went in his office, and I said, "So, do I need to go and find my soup?" And those carts, I don't know which one I put it in. And he said, "As long as you don't claim damages, if your soup is hurt in the move, we're okay." So, I do have a little bit of a personal item in there. I have to confess.
Once you get a claim from Gloria, and present it to them Tuesday, you see, we had a little problem.
I think it would be worse knowing how the other things survive the soup if they were to be damaged, but I'm confident that it will move over correctly, so.
Oh, I'm anxious. Anything else?
Well, I suppose, along with all the excitement of moving back to Courthouse Square and everything else, I might take the opportunity to say, as you know, on Monday, I announced that I'll be stepping down from this position effective, I guess it's technically 5 o'clock Monday, April 21st, according to Gloria, technicalities. So, it, I came in over the weekend to pack up my personal belongings, and I thought there's no point in moving them there and back. But, but anyway, all this new, my new endeavor of running for the State Senate, it's a busy, busy schedule, and lots of things I need to do, and two calendars colliding with each other. So, it's mixed feeling to leave now, instead of at the end of the year, when, when, end of the calendar year, when my term would actually be over. But I think it's in the best interest of everybody, especially the taxpayers. And I know it means putting in motion the process to replace, put someone new into this position, and that means that you, too, will have to get involved in that. Luckily, I don't need to be involved in that in any way, shape, or form, nor should I. But, so, there are a lot of exciting things happening at Marion County, and the move back is still really rather bittersweet for me, because of the early history of being very much opposed to building that building. When I first ran for the, this position, that was the big issue, that while coordinating offices and utilizing that space, there was a lot of merit to doing that. But in doing a lot of research and talking to community members while I was campaigning for this position, it was clear to me that it was the wrong thing to build, and that there would be problems, particularly financial problems. And when you cut corners and you move away from what's originally intended, there's always the fear that somehow or other structure and, and the soundness would also be effective. So, and this morning, the Statesman Journal says, "Nobody raised this issue." Go back to your archives, Statesman Journal. I think you'll find that I was very much raising the issues then, and, but the decision, of course, was made to go forward with the building before I was elected, and then here we are. So, it, it's, I am glad that we have gone through the process we did, the advisory committee, many, many public meetings, thorough examination of what the problems were, and coming up with a good solution, and the people we've had working on it, and you're going to be talking about that today at the ceremony. We picked the right people, the best company, to do the work, and I'm particularly happy that we did insist back then that local people, we really wanted to give local subcontractors the opportunity to participate in this, and it turned out that way, so that was good. And the building should work well for many years to come, so it'll be, like I say...
Lot of change going on.
Lots of changes.
I'd like to say I was, I shouldn't do this, that I was innocent. I was watching, just as a citizen, during that process, and I've always thought, as bad as it went, I probably would have voted for it. So, I'll just go on record. I'd have been one of the guys who said, "Sam, you made a mistake." And I don't know why I want to take that guilt for anybody else, but the fact is, I think the idea was right, to bring the county together in a central location and to, well, there was also the issue that everything up till then was done in the courthouse itself, and that, that room was disappearing quickly. So, there were some things going on. I would have gone for it, but I'm especially...
Now, maybe I didn't say it clearly enough. I didn't disagree that coordinating offices and putting something on that site, there was a lot of merit to doing that. And as we've discovered, having all of the county offices downtown, and there's a lot of economic benefit there, local businesses, and, and we've talked about it a lot, for us to not have to go to 13th Street to talk to Gloria or do it over the phone. There, there's great benefit to being located there. That was never my dispute, never my concern. My concern was in how the final decision came to be of what to build, who was building it, what was being built, and the cost of it.
I've seen those articles. I agree with...
And it was clear that there were problems, and nonetheless, it was determined to go We ended up, like I say, I've always said, it was my worst nightmare come true. So, but, here we are today. So, there's much, much good news today, and, and again, I do have confidence in the companies that have been working on this, and the oversight appears to have been adequate, and maybe even above adequate, and, you know, we never, we never know, but the process we went through was entirely different. It was the right process. It was thorough. It involved community people and people with background and expertise to help us evaluate the information and make a good decision. That didn't happen the first time.
And it feels like we've been in our temporary space for quite a long time.
We have.
But we did, but we did take the time that we needed...
Yes.
...to figure that out, which I think was really important. And one of the things that isn't on our calendar that, because all three of us won't be there at the same time, and that's what this calendar is, is that they'll be providing tours after the rededication ceremony in the parts of the building that are open right now, and also tomorrow, from what I understand, during the day, if people are listening and would like to come down and actually see the inside of it. It's kind of self-guided tours, but I, the posters that they're going to have up were leaning against the wall yesterday, and so I kind of flipped through and took a look at them. So, there are photos that show kind of the before and after, so you can take a look and see what the column looked like before, and then how they wrapped it, and, and then see how much bigger it is now, and those types of things. So, they're interesting to see if people want to come down and take a look.
But, I'm glad you're remembering to comment on that. My understanding is there will be staff people stationed at various locations to answer questions, basic questions, and there will be information, and, and you have it in front of you, Commissioner Carlson...
A lovely book that we have here.
Jolene has worked, Jolene Kelly in the board office has worked real hard to put that together, and it gives a, not the detailed, detailed background, but the general, the important background and, and information that, that the public is going to want to know, and...
The history, and also sort of the technical side of it, what structural did, and what they found, and what they had to work with, and all that. And then all the people, the many, many people that were involved in making it possible.
I could think of so much more, and I don't, I really don't even want to go back. There was a point, no, there was a point where I literally thought, "You know what? We are so in trouble. We'll never figure this out."
Oh, yeah.
And, and here we are. And, and then, of course, our hope and prayer is that it does do just what it's supposed to, and we'll probably never acknowledge enough, you know, all the, all the resources that go into this remediation, we wish didn't happen. I wish, I know I can say, and I'm sure, and that's obvious, you would, too. Not just the money, but the manpower that's been spent from the county to, we've really seen in the last month, our whole, our whole board's office concentrating on the, on the little details, lining up furniture and, and finishes and, and things that, I don't know if I factored in all that amount of time, too, but I'm just so anxious to get back, get reorganized, and get off doing the work we're supposed to be doing.
It is. It's amazing the amount of time and effort that so many people have put into it, and yet the jobs, their regular jobs have also gotten done. So, that's commendable, very commendable on their part. So, just think, when we get moved back and everyone's settled, how much easier.
Right. Lot of Saturdays and Sundays.
We'll find some new problems. All right. Anything else this morning?
No, we can go.
All right. No, we got time. We got an hour to kill or so before we leave.
I've got lots of things to do on this next hour.
All right. Then let's call this meeting adjourned.